Together, the meeting of the Finance Committee. Can I ask for a roll? No?
Wait just a second so I can get this.
Okay. We're going to call it together very soon. (laughing). Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here. He asked for a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
Motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of January 22, 2018, as proposed.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Then let's go into the travel requests, and can I ask for a motion for just number one through five, please?
Madam Chairperson, I'll make a motion to approve the following travel request. Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer, to attend Iowa Concrete Paving Association's 54th Annual Concrete Paving Workshop in Altoona, Iowa, February 7 through 9, amount not to exceed $210. Abraham Funtjes Jr., Executive Director, to attend the 2018 National Community Reinvestment Coalition Annual Conference in Washington, DC, April 8 through the 12th, amount not to exceed $2,845. Elizabeth Anders, Registrar, and Shawnee Page Curator, Water Center for the Arts, to attend the International Carnival Celebration Navy Pier, Chicago, Illinois, February 10 through 11, amount not to exceed $350. Julie Dawson, Executive Director, Beverly Cosby Housing Coordinator, Tahoe Wright Housing Coordinator, to attend the Iowa NAHRO, which is the National Association of Housing and Rehabilitation Officials, 2018 Annual Conference and Training in West Des Moines, Iowa, April 18 through 20, 2018, amount not to exceed $2,355. Lastly, Brock Welliver, Fire Inspector, to attend the class for Fire Inspector I Certification, Corralville, Iowa, February 19, or March 2 of this year, amount not to exceed $215.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
No discussion.
And somebody, a motion for number six through eight, please?
Yes, Madam Chairperson. Number six is a request to seek bids for the sale of the Gulf Simulator located at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex, and number s- keep going?
Yes, please.
Number seven is a refund request in the amount of $135 for garbage fees paid on a vacant property located at 232 Boston Avenue, and number eight's a refund request in the amount of $325.50 for garbage fees billed in error for a property located at 518 Locust Street.
Second.
Discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Okay, can I have a motion for preauthorization to expend over $1,000, and just so you don't get hoarse in doing it, why don't we have one motion from number nine through 14, please?
Madam Chairperson, I'll make a motion to approve preauthorizations to expend over $1,000, nine through 14. Airport, which is amended, amount is $2,665. Expenditure is for staff request approval, additional $100 to split the unexpected additional costs of moving terminal seating and extra setup charges by the vendor. Building maintenance, $6,442 for painting and drywall patching on the third floor of the water public library. Building maintenance, $1,178. Furnish and install electronic door screen on cab doors on hydraulic passenger elevator at the commercial street parking ramp. Building maintenance, $1,178. Furnish and install electronic door screen on the cab doors of the hydraulic passenger elevator at the water public library. Central garage, $2,188.44. Censor for the fuel tank site. And clerk finance, $1,100, I'm sorry, $1,445. Membership in the RSM Financial Executives Network Group.
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes? And then somebody take a motion for 15 through 20, please.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, sir.
Number 15 is a request from MIS Department with the amount and estimated shipping handling $1,931.51 for Dell Rugged Laptop for central garage. 16 is a, from the Planning Department, with the mountain estimated shipping handling $2,400 for appraisal for Wagner Road subdivision north of 3488 Wagner Road. 17 is from the Police Department with the mountain estimated shipping handling of $6,290 for a Ufed Touch Ultimate, or a two-year maintenance license renewal for that. And number 18 is from the Sewer Department with the mountain estimated shipping handling $5,714 plus the $305 shipping and handling for replacement belts, two dewatering gravity belts, and four dewatering belt filter press belts. Number 19 is from the Sewer Department as well, mountain estimated shipping handling of $4,822.85 for onsite service to troubleshoot vibration issue on number two Eastern Blower, which includes travel, labor up to eight hours, and expensive materials. And lastly is from Traffic Operations with the mountain estimated shipping handling of $19,950 for the American Signal rotational siren package, including installation.
Is there a second? Discussion? Not all in favor?
Madam Chairperson, if we could have Noel Anderson just remind us, a quick overview on the 3048 Wagner Road appraisal.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We've had some parties interested in some of the lots that we have developed up here to ensure that we are selling them for the proper amount, or at least reviewing those options as we're discussing them. We'd like to have it appraised so that we're aware of their value.
Thank you.
Great. And I would like to ask a question about another, number 19. This is just, the 4,800 is just to troubleshoot the vibration? It wouldn't include any repair, right?
Steve Holbrecker, Waste Management Services Director. They're going to be able to do some onsite repairs with stuff that's there, but basically we need their expertise to properly take care of this piece of equipment. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. It's got some vibrations, and if we don't get these things worked out, it will cause and do more damage, so in our professional opinion, it's the best way to bring them out and try to get this trouble shot versus accruing all the expense to send it back, get them to possibly work on it there, getting them here.
But they might be able to provide some repair in the process?
We're hoping so. We're just, basically, it's one of these very expensive pieces of equipment. You have to use somebody's outside expertise to correct versus our own maintenance staff.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask Director Holbrecker as well, a couple of these requests were, I think it said there was only one bid taken because, is, I guess that was our only vendor for this certain machine or something, or can you explain why we only go with one bid?
Essentially, most of this is proprietary equipment. I mean, it's, for lack of a better way to try to put it, a lot of times you're getting a Ford product. You can't, there's one Ford person, one rep that you're working with, so you can't necessarily go get a Chevy, something in a Chevy product to do it. So most of the time, that's what it is. We've got one manufacturer of this piece of equipment, they've got one rep, and that's who we have to get, have to get our repair parts to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next, the budget line items to be amended. I would move that we approve the budget amendment for the sanitation fund code enforcement department to approve the use of the fund balance to purchase a truck in the amount of $26,323 as submitted by the code enforcement department. Questions?
Madam Chairperson, could we get an overview on that, please?
Certainly.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. I, since this is the budget amendment, I think I'll speak to how we're doing the amendment. Attorney Zellerfer can speak to the need for the vehicle, or maybe Sandy can. We had hoped to purchase this vehicle prior to June 30 of 2017, and they had some issues with bidding, and so it wasn't completed then. During the year ended June of 2017, they had some vacant positions in the code enforcement department that generated substantial savings. Their department was under budget, I believe, $65,403 on a budgetary basis for last year, and the sanitation fund as a whole increased their unrestricted fund balance by $345,588 between June of '16 and June of '17. And the June of '17 unrestricted fund balance is about 90% of their annual revenue, which is very healthy. So I recommend going ahead and using the fund balance this year that was really earned last year, and it may not, when we get to the end of this year, we may not even needed the fund balance. Depends if there's savings this year, which it's too soon to tell right now. So we don't have any debt currently for the sanitation fund. We've worked very hard to keep it from having debt, because we don't want to issue debt and we don't want to pay interest. So I think this is a reasonable use of those funds.
Is this a new vehicle, do you know, Michelle, or is it a replacement?
Ms. Greco, Interim Public Works Director. This is a new vehicle. It, in fact, is on the council agenda tonight for approval. It's replacing a truck that was involved in an accident that couldn't be repaired.
So it is a replacement?
It is a replacement, yes.
Okay.
But it's new.
Yeah, okay.
So Madam Chairperson, if I could just follow up with Director Greco. So are we now just missing a truck? Are we not able to do the routes, or we, as far as code enforcement, are we, do we have a truck right now that we're using?
I don't believe they do. I think they're sharing a truck. They are short one truck right now on their fleet.
And this is due to an accident? Did we get insurance claim paid on that, or were we self-insured on that, or?
And I would have to check back on that, because that happened, I would have to check with Dave Zellerfer on that one.
Madam Chairperson. Ms. Greco, did not this truck have some added kinds of features to it that made it more friendly to code enforcement and what they do?
This is basically just a four-wheel drive.
It is, it's not cab, or, I mean, cargo?
No, it's not, it's not the crew cab. It's an extended cab, so it's just the little...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then, as contained for the bills payment, as contained in accounts payable invoice, report as dated February 5, 2018, in the amount of $3,189,076.3, as it be received, placed on file, approved, and forwarded to the full council. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Absence of the mayor, we're going to call the meeting together. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here. I'd ask that you all join me in a moment of silence to reflect our actions, and then Julie Dawson from the Housing Authority will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in a mission with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of the January 22, 2018, regular session as proposed.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think some of us, or most of us, got a email with some correction to the minutes. Is that correct? From a Mr. Obadall, did you get that?
I did. It is up to the council as to whether or not you want his suggestion to be taken, though.
Okay. Well, I believe what, the way he had the minutes was accurate of what the minutes were. I thought they were a little more specific, in my opinion.
What were the corrections?
Well, I don't have it right in front of me. I don't know. Do you have it, Kelly?
Do you have?
I think it was sent to Kelly and copied, council members, is what I believe happened.
I don't remember getting it.
Ms. Mayor, Pro Tem, I have not received anything. I don't even know what you're talking about.
I don't either.
Yeah, I got it.
Let's give the clerk a chance to look at, do you have the email?
I have it right here.
I do have a copy, so if the council members that saw it, if that's what you want it changed to, that's perfectly fine.
But I'd want to see those changes before I approved it. I would want to see the changes. I guess Mr. Obadall recommended some changes to the minutes that some of us have not seen, and we're not able to point out what those changes are right now. Has anybody else gotten the email and could share with us?
I did get it.
Did you?
I got it as well.
I got it pulled up. He said that he would like his minutes, or his statement in the minutes, to be read as Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive commented on the need for city council approval in accordance with the city ordinances of Waterloo prior to disbursement of city funds.
Okay, does anybody have a question with that?
Is that the only change?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
And I had originally wrote in the minutes, Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive commented on the need for final quantity adjustments to be referred to as final quantity adjustments on the agenda.
So Kelly, your, your statement remains in there, there's just that addition. Is that correct?
He wants what I wrote struck and inserted what he suggested in the email.
Would you read that one more time, Kelly, what he wants?
Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive commented on the need for city council approval in accordance with the city ordinances of Waterloo prior to the disbursement of city funds.
Okay. Madam Chairperson? Did you make the motion, Mr. Morrissey, to approve the agenda and the minutes?
No, I made the motion. I don't know.
Now I second it.
Would you amend?
Sure.
Would you amend the second?
Madam Chairperson, I, I don't, I'm not really sure exactly what was said. I know Kelly did the minutes, Mr. Obadall is saying what he said, but before I would second something like that, I'd actually want to look at the actual video to determine exactly what was going on there, because we haven't had an issue like this come up before, as far as I'm aware of.
Madam Chair, if I could ask the city clerk, what, what's the timeframe for approving minutes? Do they have to be approved at the next meeting?
We have 14 days from the date that the minutes were taken.
So today?
To get them into the paper, yep.
Yeah. Other comments?
So our 14 days is up today?
Yeah.
Correct. Well, Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
I would, or Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, I would ask that what the clerk has in there be included, and then the additional note from Mr. Obadall as far as what he recalls be added to that. That way it's complete.
It would be complete, and it's not taking any action, it is just his comment, so...
Correct.
Including it or not really doesn't impact our actions, so...
That I can second.
Okay, so you could second it?
Yes.
So we have an amended motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the minutes as amen- oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So to be sure, what the city clerk has in there remains, and there's this addition, and that's what the, what we're approving.
And in fact, Mr. Morrissey, I think we can even ask her to say, Mr. Morrissey requested that the comment be as such.
Okay, thank you.
So that we're clear.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the amended motion and the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Great, thank you. And well now, we welcome back our illustrious mayor. I'll turn it over to you for oral presentations.
All right, it's oral presentation's time. Your opportunity to address the council on issues that are, you want to talk about, so please step up to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmen, members of the council, I mean. I'm Reed Craft, 912 Kobe Road. I am speaking on behalf of the Salvation Army Corps Advisory Committee, and I'm asking that a couple of lots adjacent to the Salvation Army be sold. They are actually bordered on both sides by a property owned by the Salvation Army. I submitted paperwork some months ago to have these lots sold. We would like, of course, to have them sold for a dollar, but we have no immediate project, so we would agree to pay the assessed value, and whatever that is, it's around $4,000 or $5,000. I think the city budget, with the condition it's in, would be better off with $4,000 or $5,000 than a $2,000 or $3,000 annual expense for maintaining vacant lots. We don't, like I said, we don't have an immediate project, but we will, in a few years, be expanding our parking. We'll have a need for a shelter building, and so on behalf of the Salvation Army, I would ask that you proceed with the paperwork, or whatever the process, to sell the lots.
All right. Noel, you know anything about that, or you want to talk to Mr. Craft?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We can definitely, I would recommend, we don't have a building and grounds committee anymore, I would recommend we have a work session on this, to point out the logistics of where the lots are to the council, share the request of what the Salvation Army would like to do with it, and then look at the options that are out there. In terms of land use, these lots are located right along Franklin. We did have some previous interests in it for commercial redevelopment of these lots. It is surrounded by the Salvation Army, but there's also a large amount of land in that area that staff believes would better be reoriented to create long-term taxable value for the city by development on these lots. But we also want to continue to work and create partnership with the Salvation Army, so I think a work session and throwing some options out there might be best served.
All right. All right, so you'll let Mr. Craft know when exactly that will be, and...
Yes, I will.
Someone they needs to communicate with him also about his application or proposal that was submitted also, so please let him know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch Forest told me to tell you to turn the mic up, Mayor, so, on the way up. I don't know if anybody read the guest editorial in Sunday's paper about MediaCom deal with the city is no deal for the citizens?
It was incorrect.
Pardon me?
It was incorrect. There's a state franchise agreement, if I'm not mistaken, that changed the relationship. Is that true, Kelly? The article yesterday about MediaCom and the cable franchise agreement that the gentleman wrote, MediaCom emailed me today and said they're going to come out with a statement and assured me that that was incorrect, and they'll be coming out with the correct, correct thing pretty soon.
Okay. I think in here he said, we used to have a standing committee that used to deal with problems?
Yeah, it was prior to the state franchising agreement.
Was it?
Yeah. So it kind of changed the relationship a little bit.
He said it was a few decades of years, years ago. It was before your time, Mayor, so, I'm not blaming you, I'm just restating what he put in here, that he got his problem resolved when he called the city clerk's office, and she knew a friend in MediaCom that got, do you know anybody, Kelly?
I have lots of friends, but none at MediaCom.
The government relations.
I was just bringing up about the standing committee, Mayor. Could we get that back, or?
Yeah, I don't, I think things have changed, though, based upon the state franchising agreement that we have now. But we talked about it today, reached out to our attorney, and we'll take a look at that as well.
All right.
So thank you so much. It kind of caught me off guard, too, but there's been some changes over the last couple years on the state level. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I actually had that in my council presentation notes. I was wondering if maybe it would be possible to get some, I don't think the mics are on. I was wondering if it would be possible to maybe get like a 10, 15-minute work session on that, so we could at least let the public know. I had a lot of people contact me through social media and other things, wanting to know, you know, what, what the deal was in regards to that article. So if we, if we could maybe get a short work session on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, I think a lot of people are just concerned about the, the scope of services that media provides. So if we have a work session or a discussion, I would like us to expand the scope of that discussion to include what else we can do to enhance our media and social network coverage.
And to comment, too, I haven't had a chance to fully read the article yet, but as far as me having a friend at MediaCom, we have a government relations contact person with MediaCom, and if that's my friend, his name would be Corey Bowman, and he has done a really good job of helping me work with, helping me get citizen concerns resolved, and I'm assuming, if I remember correctly, the person who wrote the article, we actually did get a chance to successfully resolve his issues that he had, so we've had good luck and hope to continue to have good luck in the future.
And it probably would be good going to the same line of thought to get Corey here, so you can ask them questions directly. How about that? All right, so why don't we get that set up? We got, we got a busy month, but we'll get that set up, so excellent conversation. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for getting back to me about the questions I had sent you about the waste management problem. I will always be direct and come to you first with any gossip or, or things that are going on in the community that come my way, and I really appreciate your answers. But one thing that, that I have learned through this specific problem is that, for instance, when kayakers are going down the river and they see black sludge coming out of a pipe into the Cedar River, and they take a picture and send it, and that matriculates through the community, it has come back to rest on us, if you will. I mean, here's the thing, we have no contract with an outside city to accept waste from those cities. And so rather than the historic allowing administrators or personnel to make those decisions on their own, I think we have to remember that regardless of how we get into something, the buck is always going to stop right here. And so before I accept that kind of responsibility, I think it behooves us to speak with our city attorney and get a resolution that says no outside entity may make use of our wastewater program without specific authorization of the mayor and city council, because I think that's the crux of the problem. People making decisions, and I realize we have long-term employees with years and years of good experience, but this was an incident that backfired and looks badly for us. So I'll be responsible for the things that I decide, but if things are decided without my knowledge, then I have difficulty there. And this situation kind of reminds me of the canopy situation, being, us being behind the eight ball instead of out front. That's all I have about that.
I will definitely take a look at ordinance regarding your concern.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I was privileged to sit in on the Finance Committee meeting and was curious. There was a request made for a four-wheel drive vehicle, and we don't know whether the accident that destroyed the other vehicle was insured or not, and I was sort of curious of why we wouldn't have that information before we voted for the money to replace it. It's been more than one time that the vehicles or some things have been, money has been asked about, and it's been, you know, it was in an accident. If it's our accident, fine, but if it isn't, you know, why are we doing this? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? All right, on to council. Council update. Council updates.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just have a few things. For one, as some of you might know, my daughter, my six-year-old daughter was actually in Covenant Pediatrics for the past few days. She got a very bad virus, and I just want to thank the doctors and the great staff up there, as well as everyone that called and text and concerned, concerned about everything, especially you. I know we were supposed to have a meeting on Friday, and I, when I called you, you told me right away, "Don't worry about it. Go, you know, be with your daughter." I know she's watching tonight. She's feeling a lot better, so say hi to her. She's out there watching like she always does. The next thing I want to do is, I want to promote, there's a new business downtown Waterloo called Five Seasons Hair and Beard Studio. A gentleman who moved away from the community, came back, wanted to invest in downtown Waterloo. Really great. He gave me a haircut two weeks ago. Turned out great. And...
It's subjective.
Well, I asked Mr. Morrissey if he wanted to go, but he, he said no.
No, you didn't, Chris. Quit making stuff up.
Because he would have won.
It's actually, it's right next to Rodney's Kitchen, so if you go down there and get a nice haircut, head on over there.
Go get donuts.
And Rockets, yes, Rockets Bakery downtown as well. A great addition to downtown Waterloo. So some great, great businesses coming in down there. Another thing I've had some people reach out to me about is if we could look into the possibility of live streaming of council meetings online. I don't know if that's a possibility. So one of the things I thought maybe, I know Wendy's very active on our Facebook page, if it's possible to have her, maybe we can, is that, is that a possibility? Can we?
Well, we'll take, we can definitely discuss it. So absolutely.
And then also if, maybe we could get, I know Wendy, like I said, Wendy's very active on our Facebook page. If, once they're up on YouTube, if maybe we could get her to, to share that YouTube video on there, if that's a possibility. I don't think that's anything I've seen happen. That might be a new way to engage some people in the local political process here. So, those were some things people reached out to me about today, and I promised I would bring up here at the council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Whoops, go ahead.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. I was lucky enough to tour Central Middle School site, the career site. It is one of the best places to go visit if you haven't seen it. That is the future. It's the future, and our school system has identified it, and it is introducing all of these students to career possibilities and creating an excitement about it. And Dr. Lindeman and Mr. Frost couldn't have been kinder. They'll give you a tour, sign up for it, you'll see the good things that are happening in Waterloo.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
Anybody else want to interrupt, or? Okay, what, on the 23rd of January, I had our, had my 49th Ward Three meeting, and it was a very productive meeting in that one of the neighborhood associations, Edison Neighborhood Association showed up in force and had several different issues that they want to talk about. Most notably, as Noel knows, is about what's going to happen with the Edison School lot now that it, the building's down and it's sort of sitting there. So, that's one of the big concerns that they have out there, as well as, they're an older community. A lot of people may not think of that area over there as an older part of town, but some of the houses and some of the properties are starting a decline, and that, I mean, if we want to get into the history and what goes into all that, we'd probably be here all night. But they, they express concerns about that. They expressed concerns about Waterloo Industries lot there, which now I think is Green Line Polymer and maybe one or two other things there. And four to five years ago, EPA was involved, and then The Courier, Tim, had done an article back on March 15, 2016 regarding odors coming from underneath and maybe hazardous materials. And they wanted to get an update on that, Mr. Mayor, to see where that's at, and if there's any new concerns, or if those concerns continue with the hazard material that's under the ground there.
Where, where at?
The old Waterloo Industries area there, underneath that there. It's that Ainsborough and Maynard.
Or Rainbow, isn't that?
Well, yeah, Rainbows, Rainbows, it's that area. They, they also had some concerns out there about just the need for stop signs because they got a lot of little kids out there, and I directed them to, taught to Sandy Greco about that as well. One of the other things that comes up frequently is code enforcement, and I'm happy to see the code enforcement is getting this, this vehicle, at least I hope the council will vote to approve that vehicle going to them, because they need that. We got basically three code enforcement officers that cover about 21 square miles. And I, I hope that when we go into budget negotiations and budget proposals, that we look at increasing their ability to do their, their work. They do a tremendous amount of work. One of the issues specifically for Ward Three that I found out through code enforcement has to do with Longfellow School, because I know there have been complaints about Longfellow School and what's, it's getting broke into, it's getting windows knocked out and all that kind of stuff. Well, Maria Downing got back to me after she had contacted and taught to the school, and the school evidently has plans, asbestos abatement taking place relatively soon, if not now going on, and that that structure should be down sometime during the summer. So that was good news, and that's good news for the area around there. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Couple constituents that live out in the Hummingberg addition, they're close to Crossroads, have expressed concerns about the street lighting, which is very inadequate, very dim. Apparently, it's probably something that's going to involve a new light fixture as well, possibly. But I think just in terms of, we have a lot of good taxpayers there that need to have some safe lights. I'd like to take a look at that area and the streetlights, and what can we do to put new fixtures and/or put new bulbs that would safely light up their streets.
All right. And I think you've been communicating with Sandy, too, so we'll keep talking about it.
Have not come to a solution, though, to this point.
Okay, all right. All right, is there anyone else? All right, just really quickly, I am headed out of state tomorrow, maybe, to do what we call a congressional fly-in, to go to DC to talk to our congressional folks with regards to the transportation bill. And so hopefully, I'm going to present a few of the local projects that we have. So this is different than the coalition trip. We're trying to get out there before this bill is set and talk to our Congress folks and senators to make sure that cities are at the table. So I'm hoping to have a pretty good say-so with that as well. This, this Monday has been an extremely busy day. We are, we have Iowa Department of Homeland Security here. They came in May, some of our federal folks, they needed more information, so they're here this week to take a look at some of our flood sites from 2016, procurement processes, bidding process. So, it's been extremely busy, I think, for Michelle Engineering Leisure and Public Works as well. So, it's been an extremely busy day, but that's all I have to report.
Okay. I make a motion that we receive all public comments and staff's reports and place on file.
Second. A motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Okay, I make a motion to place on file and accept, and approve the consent agenda with the addition of, under A1, the amount of bills, $3,189,076.03 that are included in the summary report, a copy of which is on file in the office of the city clerk.
I would second that motion, but I would like to also ask that we take item 1B, 2G, the...
Okay, say that again.
1B as in boy, 2G as in goodness. Trucker bar. Like to take that off and make that an item by itself.
Say that one more.
Yeah, 1B, 2G, trucker bar.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we'll handle that in its entirety, but separately from the rest of...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can, can we also, I'm sorry to read.
Yes, sir.
Can we have Noel, Noel, you sent an email earlier about some of the good things that were going on here on the consent agenda. Can you just highlight those for the public, so they know everything that's been approved? Oh, do we not have a second? I'm sorry.
You made a second, but you...
No, I made the motion.
He made the second to move the trucker bar, trucker bar portion.
I apologize.
No, you're fine. And so, we, we have, we have that approved, and you want just a quick update on things on here before we take a vote and then take up your action.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I just wanted to point out to the council, you know, we go through the consent agenda, and there's, there is some good news on there. We have a total of nine new homes being built. Seven of those new homes are utilizing the Cura with a total investment of $2,678,064 in the city of Waterloo. So this is an average investment of $382,580 per home, which was a very good amount of per-home value that we're seeing in parts of the community. We also have two new homes and four home improvement projects utilizing the Cura with a total investment of $484,064. The average new home investment of $200,000 per home in this area. The average home improvement investment of $21,016. And remember, the original Cura was adopted after a study by the University of Northern Iowa to determine a kind of a blighted housing, deteriorated structure-type system analysis of the community. So that was what the Cura boundary represents. So it's good to see that this indication of people investing back into these areas, back into infill areas and improving Waterloo as a whole.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, all but items 1B, 2G, which we will take after we vote on the items I just mentioned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I am going to vote yes on all, but I will need to abstain on items I and J.
Okay. Which ones are those?
They're just licenses.
All right, duly noted. Madam Clerk?
I'm not sure if this is the moment when I ask if we could remove 4 and 5 for discussion under appointments.
We have already, if Mr. Schmidt wants to go back to amend his motion, but... Sure, I would, I would be willing to amend that motion to allow, do you want to move those two off?
I would like to have a discussion about 4 and 5.
You wanted it, so do you want to keep them here and just, because you can still talk about it right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can keep them here, I just want them a chance to...
Okay, sorry about that. So, questions?
Oh, for number four, under, under appointments. It is the appointment of Jonathan Olarick from the civil service list to the position of garage mechanic. That's a full-time job. I'm just concerned about the state of our budget and adding full-time positions at this moment.
Right. Good question. These are already in, in there. Councilman Schmidt had asked for a list of the other vacant positions for our budget conversations coming forward, those that are vacant. And there's no position that, at least I don't believe, as mayor or internal committee didn't believe that they were absolutely essential. But Sandy, you want to talk about this position for Mrs. Klein? And where this is paid from?
Sandy Greco, interim public works director. This is a position that was approved last year in the budget. It's an additional mechanic. This is paid out of general fund, however, the garage budget is, is different from other general fund budgets. We, we have chargebacks to sewer sanitation, street traffic, where all their parts and some labor and everything is billed back to those departments because they're public work or their road use tax, sewer fund, sanitation fund. So, the biggest majority of the central garage budget is chargebacks to other departments and other funds. As our mechanics are getting older...
You mean seasoned?
And we, right, and we are getting, seasoned, sorry. And we are, our equipment's getting older, plus we are in the process of hopefully purchasing some new equipment.
I'm sorry, Sandy. Mrs. Klein wants to know, is this absolutely important and critical to getting work done?
Yes.
Because they'll have to decide whether or not, whether or not they believe where it's at with the budget, because it's already budgeted. But folks want to know, are we, do we screen this? You know, how is this going to help? Is this a necessary position?
Yes. At this time, we have about 430 pieces of equipment and vehicles that we maintain, and we have eight mechanics to do all of this. We have a backlog right now, and it's, it's not because they're not working and filling the eight-hour days, but we, we just need this extra mechanic. And, I mean, we have had backloads, and we try not to do any overtime because that is costly, too. So, yes, it's very well needed, and, I mean, if you want to come out and see exactly what we do, we're busy all the time, especially like right now. We have plows coming in.
And one of the questions we've been asked with relation to the garage is the ability to take some types of, you know, whether it's oil changes and those various things, and get those done so that we can speed up the process. All those questions that was asked last year, all of those will be part of our budget discussion coming up. So you'd have the data and information. And this right now, these folks have pretty much almost been offered a position. But yes, ma'am.
That, that makes everything awkward, and I saw that happen before, but as a council person, I have to be responsible in what, at least I do. And this is an expansion of personnel. It is not to replace someone who's retired, if I understand correctly. And so, we are growing a department, and we haven't even discussed solutions that perhaps might include outsourcing.
That's, that is all going to be a part of the budget process. I've been asked by council before to come up with that information. We're going to have that conversation within the next two weeks. Is this an expansion, or is this budgeted for already this year?
Yes. It was approved in last year's budget during the budget talks.
It does not replace anyone, though. It is an expansion.
And may I ask a question, Mr. Mayor of Mr. Dunn? Just to make sure I understand the process, if it's already been approved from a civil service list, then that means that it's already come to the internal, if you will, council requisition process, and we've already approved it?
Lance Dunn, HR Director. Yes, if it's, it's been approved through the budget. When it's, when it's budget time, it's approved. So, all the positions are approved during the budget time. So when it's coming, basically approving the individual when it comes to this particular time. So, there's no change as far as the, the dollars that were approved from before. This is more about the individual being hired, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Every time I come to a council meeting, I feel like we are revisiting the canopy. We are asked to approve things that are already done.
This, this was, this, this...
I understand. I understand that the position was created. But in my view, it's more charitable to delay this until we know where we stand with our budget than to actually have to redo someone who has moved here and bought a house.
That, that is absolutely your right and your decision. The position was voted on prior to you, so if you're coming in and been on council for one month, we already... we already bring these things to the city council member. So, yes, you are probably going to approve something that was brought there, but you've been here a month. This is not something that was a canopy where it was drawn at someone. This was already talked about, already discussed. So, yeah, you're probably voting on stuff that was prior to you getting here. But this wasn't, this wasn't anything that was done in the dark. Mr. Juan.
No, that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I remember this actually coming up when Mark Rice was the director and we did have a lengthy conversation about the need for that additional mechanic simply because of the fact that the garage itself was falling behind in the work that they needed to keep up. And I remember that happening and that was why we ended up voting the way that we did as far as for this position, Councilwoman Klein. It was so that the garage would be able to keep up, not have to do the overtime and do all of those things that were actually going to add cost.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, so, you know, things change over time. We're voting on this now. We have some new council members. Um, you know, a year ago, we asked a lot of questions as to how could we do this a little more efficiently? We looked at sharing services. We looked at some part-time employees to help cover the gap. And all that was even, uh, seriously given any consideration, I don't think, by, uh, the previous, uh, director. Um, you know, this position is eighty-four thousand dollars plus to the taxpayers. Um, I don't know why we couldn't just wait a couple months to get past the budget season so we know how we're gonna pay for it before we ever get ourselves to another eighty-four thousand dollar position. Um, you know, we could definitely look at some other ways to, to get caught up. But the main things are getting done. We are behind, we know that. But let's look at solutions. Let's not just look at every single time we get in the corner, we wanna hire another full-time employee and that just continues to rack up our expenses here. We don't even know how we're gonna cover this, this expense, to be honest with you. So let's get through budget season and then let's add another full-time employee if that's what it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I, I, I know, uh, Councilman Jacobs, Councilman Schmidt, Councilman, uh, Amos and myself were on the discussions that we had regarding this position. I mean, there were so many pieces of equipment that need to be repaired that this position was brought up at last budget. This position is paid for out of the current budget. It's budgeted for. Um, we're not adding any money to the budget. We are just finally filling this position for the benefit of public works and being able to do their job. I believe that discussion also involved the fire department and public safety in their need to have their, uh, equipment, their, uh, trucks, their vehicles worked on. So what was a general discussion that we had. And, uh, Councilwoman Klein, this is in no way, uh, expanding anything. It is taking care of business that the city of Waterloo needs to take care of that has been not taken care of for years. During these talks, we talked about, um, whether we could privatize this. We talked about part-time people. Mark Rice was there. I, I know that Chief Treeler was there talking about it. Mr. Welper was there talking about it and the different needs that there were within the department to get this position, uh, and get it going soon. Unfortunately, we're six months, better than six months, seven months after that and we still haven't filled it. But when this came up in, it was either November or December, we voted to recruit and hire. This is merely the last step. This is the appointment step. We were told then that there should be no problem with the, these appointments at all because these people are being vetted, interviewed, and then they're being chosen out of the group. So this is the appointment of that hiring process. That's what it is.
Mr. Mayor. I have no problem with the process. I just have a problem having it suggested that it is inevitable and that I have to vote one way. Here's another thing I have a problem with. The money that we had last year, we may not have this coming year. And we have to be responsible, responsible to the people who elected us and, and be good stewards of their money. And that's all I'm asking, is for time to look at how this budget unfolds, to see if there are other ways we can go about achieving what we want, but using different means.
Mr. Mayor.
That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor. Well, uh, Councilwoman Klein, your insinuation that if I choose to want to have this position filled implies, uh, intimately that I don't, uh, respect taxpayers' wishes, that's a false assumption.
Mr. Mayor.
I do totally and I.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that Mr. Morrissey not make comments like that to me that insinuate I'm trying to read his mind in any way. I'm not. I'm just saying that I feel personal pressure sometimes when it's presented to me as an, as an inevitable vote.
At this point, at this point, I'll make one last question. Um, folks are pretty much set in what they want to discuss, how they want to vote on this, so there's really no reason to continue. Uh, the only thing I'll say is, um, this is a city. Um, the city has to have fire trucks. The city has to have police cars. The city has to have trucks. The city has to have, uh, dump trucks to be able to take care of the business, um, of city business. And that's what we do. Um, any position that comes before you has been scrutinized over and over. Um, last year, we were asked about outsourcing and some other ways. We will have that discussion. Uh, as I said, but we are a city and we got things that we need to take care of for the public good. And this is a position as well for the public good. Um, that's the end of discussion on number four. Now we have number five.
I believe I'd like to make a little.
This is a position, and I, I would absolutely love to hear your comments, but this is about a personnel matter. Um, we haven't allowed personnel matters.
Has a right to come up and speak as everybody else did.
We do not have a discussion about a personnel matter. Mrs. Klein, you have a question for number five?
I do.
Have a talk about this later.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question about number five. I see that on the panel that approved, the person that we are supposedly hiring here was on the, her own approval panel. I have a fundamental problem with that. If I, wouldn't it be great if we could all be on our own interview team? We'd rate ourselves a thousand percent.
I know I would. Well, I probably would dock myself sometimes, but.
No, you wouldn't.
Can you talk to us about, uh, uh, whatever she just said?
Okay, the, the, the comment just made is confusing to me. But I will start that this again is a budgeted position that's been in the budget. It is, the funds for this is, comes from the sewer fund. And the process taken in this position is to fill, uh, the, Evelyn Russell, the person that retired at the end of December. The process that was followed is the Personnel Rec, Internal Personnel Rec Committee approved filling this position on twelve, five, seventeen. The city council HR committee approved this position on twelve, eleven, the recruitment process. Uh, this is not a civil service position. And as a result, Ms. Heinrich was approved on a, through a temporary service to begin this so she could cross-train with the former employee. And as a result of that, she was able to do that for two weeks. She's been in temporary status for the following month. And she's done a good job and I'm recommending filling this person, having this person filled on a full-time basis to fill that position.
Mr. Mayor.
So I'm not sure how she was ever on her own panel to get to this point, if that was the question. I don't, I, I fully don't understand. She had, she had nothing to do with her own panel.
On the, on the attending documents, it lists the panel and it lists her name and the action that, the one person said rejected, then Ms. Heinrichs or Henricks said approved. Appearing, her name appears on that panel that was sent to us as approving her own contract, wouldn't we all?
What? I'm gonna lost. Can, what document are we talking?
I hear Steve.
Let me see it, let me see it, please. Nancy. Reviewers. Nancy Higbee rejected.
That's the council communication for getting it on the novice agenda, not the hiring documents.
Oh, there were.
Nancy Higbee works in my department.
She, one of the duties of this position is to put these items on the agenda. And that's what she did.
And since, since this individual's been serving as the department secretary, a lot of times for department heads, department secretaries, input items into Novus so that builds your council communication that you'll be seeing. And then individuals in my department go in and confirm the submissions that have been made or make changes or reject them back to the department. So that's why you're seeing Nancy Higbee, Waste Management, rejected. Waste Management, Juliana Heinrich, approved. Waste Management, Steve Holmbricker, approved. So that's going through the, um, hierarchy of the process approvals. And then ultimately it comes to Leanne Even, City Clerk's Office, approved the item and that's how it appeared on the agenda.
We almost saw fireworks.
Thank you for clearing it up, but it's very ambiguous.
I, I was a little confused on that myself. Um, I, I just wanna clarify what temporary status is. I mean, like from a temp agency or she's currently in that position and we've been giving.
We filled it through a temp agency.
So we're not giving benefits?
At the present time, this person, and she's here in the audience today. But at this time, she is hired through a temp agency, not receiving benefits and it is a full-time position. And so she's done a good job for the month and a half that she's been here and I'm recommending appoint her to the budgeted full-time position, which will receive benefits.
It is council's discretion. So, we have, we have four and five on here. Um, council has, council, um, can vote, uh, how they deem. So Madam Clerk, uh, and we still have the item. We still have, um, the, the trucker bar off of these items, so we had discussion, so.
Are we, are we taking four and five separately or are they?
No, they're included in the consent agenda presently. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, on all, no on four.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, on all, no on four.
Mrs. Klein?
No on four, yes on the rest.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, on all, no on four.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Alright, all of those, uh, passed except for number four. Alright, um, so now we have the trucker bar up, which is.
Two G.
Two G. So, Mr. Schmidt, would you like an overview?
Well, the motion is to approve the, uh, Class C liquor license, uh, renewal for the trucker bar nineteen fifteen Borland Avenue. And, um, I know there's been some discussion about that, but I'd just like to have a public discussion overview cause I got some calls from some folks in that neighborhood.
Yeah, can we get a second and then?
I'll second it.
Yeah, that motion has been made with the second. Um, who's? It wa, it was a motion to approve. He just wants some overview about. Uh, who's, who's got it? Uh, Dave or? Trucker bar?
This was originally denied back on December fifth and we didn't have all the information at that time. We found out, uh, last week that the trucker bar had submitted an abatement plan to the city and we weren't aware of it. I, I don't know how it got lost, uh, but I discovered it last Monday and, uh, I think I called everybody. Called everybody on council within about an hour after I discovered it to tell you that, uh, I didn't think we were gonna be very successful at the alcohol hearing and that they'd done what we asked them to. I'd called, uh, a complaining neighbor, the woman who had, uh, given us the information about them. And she said that ever since they entered this agreement with the city, which, uh, which was November eighth, I believe, everything's been great. The hours were cut down. There's been no noise. There's been no problems and she's very happy. I assured her that, uh, if we did give the license back, which we probably are gonna have to, uh, then we will, uh, monitor. We will make certain they follow their Ps and Qs and if she does have any further complaints, we'll be right on it. But right now, if I think we took this to a hearing with the, uh, folks in Ames, the alcohol board, we'd lose tremendously.
I know we have questions, yes.
Mr. Mayor, so just for clarifying, I, a neighbor had, I don't know if it's the same neighbor, but a neighbor had contacted me and had said that the same process took place roughly three years ago. I don't know if that's true or not.
Twenty fourteen.
Things went well for one year, then when after that, right after that one year, things went bad, badly again. So are we going down the same road that we went down three years ago or?
I hope not. Uh, you know, some of the complaints were, here's the big problem we have with the trucker bars. Some of the complaints are based upon a, they call it trucker bar, actually it's fusion bar. There's a trucking company also located within the same building. And oftentimes the, they are two separate entities and the alcohol people are not allowed to punish the fusion bar for what happens with semis that would leave their engines running all night. And those are the types of things that are complaints and they do show up at that address, but they don't have anything to do with the alcohol license. And if we bring those up, we'll be shot down rather severely. Yeah, well, we're gonna continue to monitor it. I think the fact that they've cut their hours significantly and that the actual owners of the building are gonna be there and they haven't dealt, delegated the responsibility of management uh, to other people like they had before. And, uh, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna promise or go out here and say, yeah, it'll be perfect, but we're gonna watch them and the police are aware of it. And if they, uh, continue, start up again, we'll be right on them. That's what we can promise.
Can the council be updated in like six months or three months? Where when it gets warmer out, um, to let folks know exactly if there's been any service calls, what's been the nature? Um, because I think the question was just stated about two thousand and fourteen and going back down that road again. Um, so we don't end up four years later. But is it possible for you to give quarterly or, uh, semi-annual, um, updates so people know what's going on? I mean.
Yes, it is. We, uh, I plan on it, uh, keeping my nose in their business for a while, especially when the weather, what does turn, uh, warmer. That's when the problems start with alcohol-serving organizations. At this time of year, when it's twenty below zero, nobody's gonna be outside making noise and playing loud music. But, uh, in July and all the festive months, yes, and that's when we'll have to start watching.
So, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna get an update quarterly? Is that what I heard?
Sure. Uh, I'll be in touch with the, the police department. They'll certainly keep me involved. And I think that's the best we can do under the circumstances.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Zeller, are these the same owners that have owned this business going back beyond two fourteen, do you know?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, at what point in time do they start getting it, that they're not operating by the rules? And, and I, I know exactly what you're talking about, just what the mayor said, that from October to April, October to March, we don't hear much about problems with bars and spring to fall, we do. And this is right on the edge of a residential neighborhood, never should have been allowed to have been a bar. I don't know who let that happen, but it did. Um, so now we gotta deal with it. But, but at what point in time do we say enough's enough? And the state doesn't pull our legs out from under us? I mean, given the number of complaints, the number of, I don't know how many times, I don't know if Joe, you've got any idea how many calls we've gotten on this place over the last four or five years? Maybe not recently, but going back to two thousand and fourteen, it was a boatload. I mean, at what point in time, uh, do we have the ability to just say that's it? Haven't they been identified as a nuisance bar?
Joe Lible, Police Department, yes, they were identified under the chief, under the chronic nuisance ordinance and that resulted in the abatement plan that they've complied with since November. And I didn't bring a copy with me, I forgot it, but I'm sure the attorney has one. So yes, they were and they're part of the abatement plan. So if they fail to meet that abatement plan, there are actions that can be taken.
Alright, thank you.
That are more swift this time, I would assume, since they did.
Yeah, it's quicker. Uh, I don't know the exact specifics of the ordinance, but it's quicker once they start violating again. However, you are correct, this time of year, we have less trouble at bars than we do in the summer.
Okay. Questions? We anticipate that first quarterly report. Or else, Madam Clerk.
It's a voice vote for a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. Uh, we have some, uh, some board appointments. Edward Odison, Richard Jakes. Edward Odison, Richard Jakes, and Casey Gardner. Is anyone in the audience? Anyone here? All right, so there's two, the designer review board and general contracting board is Casey Gardner as well. All right. Yes, sir. We have our. Juliana Heinrich in the audience?
And Ruth Mueller.
And Ruth Mueller? If you want to stand? All right, congratulations. And is our other appointment here, Sandy? Well, I know, I just wanted to say.
Sorry.
All right.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof publication notice of public hearing. And that's a request by Stephen Hackbarth to rezone approximately one point zero five acres of land from R three multiple resident district and CZ commercial district to C one CZ conditional zoning district for the purpose of establishing an antique store and one apartment unit in a former church building located at seven nineteen West Sixth Street.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion received, file, consider, and pass the first time. An ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located at seven nineteen West Sixth Street.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor, could we?
No.
Have an overview?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, this is the church building as you're driving on Fifth and it turns into Sixth, kind of around that curve. The church is no longer functioning in that building. This individual has, has acquired the building and is asking to be able to use it for this commercial purpose. Under the zoning ordinance, that is not allowed without the rezoning action that's being requested before you. The Planning Commission, there was no one present in opposition to it. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with conditions in place that there, number one, there'd be a solid six-foot fence along the southeasterly property line of the parking lot to screen it from the residential use located at eight seventeen Wellington. Number two, that the use be limited to an antique shop with one unit apartment. Number three, that there is no outside storage allowed on the premises. And number four, that the signed regulations of the C one neighborhood commercial district be met for the site.
Any zoning issues or any other zoning issues or code issues or anything like that?
They will have to meet building code issues for the commercial part of the building. So they'll be working with our building department for any renovations or changes necessary there. Probably not a lot of major changes since it was a church before, so it probably has a lot of those in place.
I think it's great that they found a reuse for that building, but from a historical preservation, is the historical value of this building already gone because of things have been done to it? Or will this owner, if they haven't, will this owner be allowed to be able to go in and do renovations that would destroy that historic?
They, they can as a private property owner, they can obviously go in there and make modifications. If they were to try to use any state or federal historic tax credits or something like that, they would have to return it to its historical nature, historical design.
Has the Historic Preservation Committee been involved in this at all?
They have not, no.
Are they still functioning or?
They are, there's no jurisdiction for them in this type of a request to where they could say no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Noel, we would then be moving this property on to the tax rolls with this action?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have another question for Mr. Anderson. This is a one-purpose decision, right? Five, ten years from now, if this person can't make a go-over to decides to move, this can't turn into a bar?
It would have to come back, it would have to go back through the same process. So the conditional zoning that they're requesting is, is use-specific and with the conditions in place. So even if in six months they wanted to change the use of it to something else, it would have to go back through the Planning Commission and then to City Council for final decision.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Noel?
Noel.
In look, in looking over the attachments, one of the things, or a couple of things in there were that the tech review committee had recommended tabling anything to do with this due to concerns about the need for the sprinkler and fire alarm system. Has that been addressed? And then the second thing, and I know this is a zoning issue, but why go ahead with anything if that is something that's not going to be able to be met by the persons that want to do this do-over? And then the other one is certified architectural plan needs to be submitted for the renovation and building code review, those two issues. Noel?
I know that they've been talking to the building official and building department about the, the necessary changes that they are required to do. In terms of which comes first, the chicken or the egg? The zoning action is by far the, the cheaper alternative for them to have approved first. You wouldn't want them to go ahead and hire someone to design a sprinkler system and have the zoning fail. So from a, from a financial standpoint, we believe it's prudent to go ahead and have the zoning action approved. Then if for some reason they're not able to meet the building code requirements and don't move ahead with it, they're not out as much money.
But, but my question Noel is, has there been any discussion with the potential developer of this regarding their ability to install a sprinkler fire alarm system as, as necessary required by code?
Like I said, they are talking to the building official about the different requirements and different options that they may have in terms of what will be required in looking through those options. So they may have different ways of laying it out or doing things that would require a sprinkler system of one type versus another, and they are exploring those options.
And then lastly Noel, even if this developer decided not to do that, would it be in the best interest of the city to rezone this anyway because of the potential exists there for development?
We certainly don't see a reason why the rezoning action here, even if it were to fail to move ahead, would be detrimental to the area. Because again, since it's use-specific, if someone else were to come in and say, hey, now they want to turn it into a six-unit apartment building, that would have to come back through the process for us to review the actions of that, the parking requirements and all that.
Okay, thanks.
And what's the timeframe? When would they like to get started?
I think, you know, obviously the zoning action moving through allows them to continue to move ahead with their building plans. So any action to move ahead faster is better for them, but I'm not sure that they're, need it all approved in one night.
Okay, all right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion received and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on the Phelps Youth Pavilion Playscape Project.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. It's your opportunity to address the council on this particular issue. Is there anyone? Forgot to ask, were there any comments on file?
There were no comments on file.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, bid documents, form of contract, estimate of cost, et cetera.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion received, file, instruct the city clerk to read the bids?
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Madam Clerk?
Our first bidder was Atomic Theme Works Manufacturing Incorporated of Surrey, British Columbia, Canada. They provided a five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Second bidder was, second bidder was Kids' Stream of Dallas, Texas. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-five thousand dollars. Third bidder was Soft Play of Huntersville, North Carolina. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Soft Play of Huntersville, North Carolina in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in conjunction with the Phelps Youth Pavilion Playscape Project and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schimpf?
Number four is a motion received and filed proof of publication notice of public hearing. That's for the purchase of one four-wheel drive compact pickup with crew cab.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So can we get an overview off of this, replacing a code enforcement vehicle?
Yes, sir. Sandy?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. I did a little background search in the last few minutes. And this was a two thousand nine Ford Ranger that was in an accident that was totally destroyed it. And it was the city, city's fault. It was, the person who was driving, it was a one, one-car accident and she totaled the vehicle. It was sold two years ago in a silent auction for four hundred dollars. That in turn was put back into general fund because at that time, code enforcement was paid out of general fund. Since then, she has been driving on and off a two thousand nine Ford Ranger that is basically in the shop more than out on the road. It was a hammy down from Waste Management. So this in turn will replace that truck.
So my question then is, Sandy, I was, I was in a fender bender when I was sixteen maybe. You know, and I remember my parents made me pay the deductible and then we got it fixed. So were we self-insured on this or?
Yes, the city's self-insured.
On that vehicle.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Was this employee drug and alcohol tested?
What year was this? Two thousand nine?
No.
That was the car.
That was the truck.
That was the truck. This happened, I believe, three years ago.
Three years ago? So they didn't go to Allen after accident or somewhere?
Is there a city, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Usually if, if they're a CDL, they have to be tested. I'm not sure Lance would be able to answer that.
Lance, the HR director, that's the policy. I'm not sure if that happened three years ago, but policy, if there's an accident, they are sent for a test. So I'm not sure if that happened back then, so.
And I believe code enforcement was under, I'm not sure at that time. I don't know if it was building or, because they've been moved around.
Waste, probably was Waste Management at the time.
Could have been, yes.
Mr. Mayor? What were the circumstances of the accident?
Does anyone know?
The only thing I know is that she was driving on the highway two eighteen and she hit the guardrail.
I think, I think there was an ice patch that she hit and.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't just she ran into it, yeah.
It was a single-car accident.
Right.
It was an old truck and just went for a scrap, I think.
Do you know for sure whether it was an ice patch or are we just thinking that?
No, I remember her saying that, I wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
Can someone?
It was during the winter and there was ice on the road, kind of like a night.
Can someone respond to Mrs. Klein tomorrow with more detail?
I'll certainly find out if there is drug and alcohol testing and get back to you on that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sandy? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, yes, sir.
A resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. More questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion received, file, instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our first bidder was Community Motors Company Incorporated. They provided a bid in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. They're from Cedar Falls, Iowa. Next bidder was Jerry Rolling Motors of Waverly, Iowa. Their bid amount was twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Third bidder was Rydell Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Fourth bidder was Withem Auto Centers of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Next bidder was Pat McGrath Chevy Land of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Their bid amount was twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. Final bidder was Carl Chevrolet of Ankeny, Iowa. Their bid amount was twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, so resolution to award bid to Carl Chevrolet of Ankeny, Iowa in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred, twenty-two dollars and thirty cents.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, can someone take five through seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Pro Western Associates in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for completion of the road's center line addressing layer for the city's GIS geographical, geographic information system and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Number six is a resolution approving an acquisition contract with John Anthony Von Tonder and Helene Von Tonder to donate a nine thousand three hundred and eighty-square-foot property to the city of Waterloo located southeast of eleven twenty-eight Washington Street, Highway two eighteen, near the southwest corner of Washington Street and West Eleventh Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau Board recommendation for funding a hotel motel mini grant application for the first robotics competition Iowa Regional in the amount of two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second.
For the second time?
Uh, questions? Anyone with questions on these items?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Let me see if the public first, anyone? Mr. Schimpf?
Mr. Mayor, uh, a question on number six. I don't know if it's for Eric, cause I see his name on here.
I'll figure it out.
Or Noel. Um, so we're, do we have any development planned for that parcel at all?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. This parcel is located between Ninth and Eleventh, right along Highway two eighteen. Um, we do not have a specific project to go back in there right now. However, we do own land, uh, three lots to the northwest of that, um, where we're seeing some expansion on the, uh, the Quick Stop Three. He's been doing some building expansions there. We just demolished a house there. We also own land at the corner of, right at the corner of, uh, Eleventh and Highway two eighteen. So, um, in terms of, uh, maintenance of this lot, we won't have remobilization or anything because they'll just move from one lot to the next with the mowing equipment and, and the snow equipment. So it's, it'll be one of the cheaper lots. Um, we believe long-term redevelopment of the city. Um, it makes sense to have commercial along the highway section here. Um, all of the houses along this section between Ninth and Eleventh are all, um, either owned by people out of the state or they are rental units. So again, we believe that this is a, a good reuse area. And with the donation of the land here and land nearby, we think it'll be one of the cheaper ones to have to maintain. Hopefully in a short-term period so we can get redevelopment there.
But es- essentially what we're gonna do is take the slot from a revenue generator to an expense.
That is correct. Um, I didn't look up the taxes being paid on it now. I would imagine it's not very much. Two hundred and seventy-six dollars per year is what it's paying. So obviously, um, if we acquire it now through this donation instead of someone else buying it and then when we do have a project there and we have to buy it for a lot of money, we believe this is a, the better solution at the time.
Thank you.
All right, questions five, six, and seven? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
No one six. Yes to on the rest.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ooh, we got some hearings on there. Who, uh, wants to take number eight for me? Yes, sir.
Oh, oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We couldn't put these all together, no?
Uh,
Mr. Mayor, number eight is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending number five zero seven nine as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located at and adjacent to two hundred Nevada Street.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Um, second time we've seen is questions? Madam, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend, suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll pick it up next week. Number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Number nine is an ordinance adopting the Waterloo, Iowa Airport Land Use and Height Overlay Zoning Ordinance, regulating height and use restrictions in the vicinity of the airport to avoid airport hazards.
Just for a second time?
Check it.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Check it.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk? Yeah, you're fine.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Who's, uh, Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Check it.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey and number eleven is all yours if you want it. I heard the voices that time, yes, sir.
My question is, Mr. Mayor, do you want all of these taken in being as that they're all pretty interconnected?
I don't have anywhere else to be. We're gonna take all of them, one by one, every reading.
If that's what you wanna do, you're the pleasantries officer, Mr. Mayor.
Number two, we're not gonna suspend, we're gonna take them all and be here.
Okay, do you want me to read this very slowly then?
No, no, don't do that.
Okay. Motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code, section five four, obedience to official traffic control devices by deleting subsection eighty-eight, First Street E and Mulberry Street, pre-timed and ninety, whatever that means, First Street E and Sycamore Street, pre-timed as signals have been removed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions?
We have a little overview on this, Mr. Mayor.
A little overview on this, please, Sandy?
Mr. Mayor, can, can we make the overview on all four of them here or, I don't know if it's?
We're gonna take our time.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. Um, this one is when they did the reconstruction of Highway sixty-three. The DOT does the study because it's their highway. Um, they rule on the signals even though we have the ordinance and we maintain them. And due to their traffic study, um, they elected to take out or not, not replace, um, the signals at Mulberry and at Sycamore. The signals are still there at Lafayette.
All right.
And, and basically what we're doing is on these two ordinances, we're taking out the traffic signals. The next one, we're making First Street as a through street, which means stop signs go in. That's basically, you have to delete one to state the other, so that's basically what it is.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my understanding from talking with Mohammed was that, um, DOT, I mean, this is sort of like us just formally saying, yeah, okay, but if we voted against it, they still would do it.
Right, they're, they're out. They're not going back in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sandy, uh, was it one of these intersections where that terrible accident was at? The van, the van with nine people in it?
That was at Sycamore and First, yes.
Isn't that what one of these is? Is it Mulberry? That was Sycamore. So, Sycamore. Thank you. So, um, I mean, do we have alternatives?
Basically, no, we don't. We could petition the state, but they've already made the decision, so it's their highway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In, in talking with Mohammed, uh, Sandy, I know you, uh, confirmed this, that, that he said that, um, he had been involved with discussions on this and they also wanted, uh, to include Lafayette Street in this and not put any signalized, uh, apparatus there. But he prevailed on that one, he was able to show them. Uh, but they believe that, uh, evidently DOT believes that safety is, uh, not an issue when it comes down to the other two intersections if I am repeating what Mohammed had said. It's not the same kind of issue as we might see it to DOT.
They, they do the traffic study and that's what they go by.
Right. Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure, did I take enough time on that?
I stopped counting after, I stopped counting after fifteen minutes. No, but good, good questions that you got answered, so I love it.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam?
Yes, sir.
Time limit.
Well, this is, you said this is already, this is already done, state, so we're just.
So if somebody thought they were smarter than the state and wanted to make a case, the next two readings would give them an opportunity to come and tell us that. And I think that's why there are three readings on items like this, according to the former city attorney.
Not anything, that's the source of contention, I just asked the question. That's personal, dude. Come on, Steve. All right, um, Madam Clerk? And matter of fact, my, my, my wife and my children are sick.
I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at you when I said that.
You were talking to me. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, number eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs., Mrs. Klein.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Did we go to the second?
It was, it was, uh, you need to have a supermajority, so you had five out of seven, so we're fine. Number eleven.
Item eleven is an ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code, section five four three, through streets by deleting subsection fifty-seven, First Street E, and adding in lieu thereof a new subsection fifty-seven, First Street E.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs., we gotta do the motion to suspend the rules.
Uh, motion to sp- to suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number twelve?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schimpf?
Number twelve is not, um, hey, there it is. Number twelve is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the tw- two thousand eight traffic code, section five four three, through streets by deleting subsection one seventy-seven, Walnut Street and adding in, in lieu thereof, a new subsection, one seventy-seven, Walnut Street as follows, one forty-four Walnut Street, Clay Street, to South Barkley Street except for traffic signals at East Park Avenue, East Fourth Street, Martin Luther King Drive northbound, Martin Luther King Drive southbound, except four-way stop at East Third, and I feel like I just drove all through Waterloo.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Who have the second? Have an overview on this?
Sandy? Um, who, who made the second? That was you, Mr. Sanders? Thank you.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. This in turn, what you're doing is, um, you're, okay, Walnut Street is a through street. So what we're doing is we're taking the two-stop signs out on this one. The next one, we're installing a four-way stop. Okay, so we have to take the two-stop signs out of the ordinance in order to allow to put the four-way stop in, in the next ordinance.
And this is the one that the neighbors?
Right, and, and Mohammed did an extensive study there and, um, I can read his study if you would like me to.
I just, on behalf of the, uh, Boys and Girls Club and the Walnut Neighborhood Association and the Walnut Apartment, uh, tenants, I'd like to thank you for finally getting this done after a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that's how, that's how it works, but they appreciate that.
Okay, so that's what we're doing on the two ordinances.
All right, thank you, Sandy. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
A motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Number thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Now, do you want me to go slow? Motion to receive, file, considering pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code, section five four four, always stop intersections by adding subsection thirty-seven Walnut Street as follows, thirty-seven Walnut Street from Clay Street to East Third Street.
Second.
A motion's been made with a couple seconds. Uh, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Number fourteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion approving change order number one for a net increase of three thousand dollars to Lehman Trucking and Excavation Incorporated in relation to demolition services of twenty sixteen to twenty twenty Commercial Street.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, no?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. Two sixteen to two twenty Commercial Street was the dental studio building, um, that's across from the Waterloo for the Center for the Arts. As you may recall, uh, we were going through demolition of this um, as part of our targeted acquisitions of downtown Waterloo to, and to, uh, put together the, the parking lot that serves the, uh, Young Arena, the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and the Sportsplex. As a part of this, um, working through the, uh, asbestos abatement and removal and demolition, we got late in the year to where the, uh, asphalt plant was closed. Um, we worked with the, uh, contractor, Lehman Excavating, to basically add this as extra work onto the, uh, original demolition contract of three thousand dollars to put down recycled asphalt. Um, the concern was, with the demolition there, they will grate it, and it'll be dirt, but people would be parking on it, making a mess. Um, we had some concerns for parking for the Blackhawks, uh, hockey games. Um, so we moved ahead with, um, him basically putting the recycled asphalt there. We did cost compare, the cost of that area being, uh, filled with recycled asphalt with some other engineering, road contracts and all that, and believed it was a very good price.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say, if, I mean, if, if you're an avid hockey fan like I am and you like to go to Blackhawks games, you know this was necessary for the citizens. And if you hang out at the Sportsplex or anywhere down there, I think this was something that was very necessary to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask, I am assuming this three thousand has not been paid yet, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. More questions? Madam Clerk? Oh, all in favor, is that it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Um, Mr. Attorney, are we doing it properly?
Dave Zeller for City Attorney, yes, uh, I have the authority to state whether or not this is done correctly, and it is, we are going into executive session to discuss legal strategy.
Based upon pursuant Iowa Code twenty-one point five one C.
Yes.
And we will return.
The law gives, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in exec session.
Can you get two seconds?